Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education's special meeting. We'll begin this evening with silent prayer. Commissioner O'Donoghue, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Looking forward to our update on our superintendent search from Ray &amp; Associates, Dr. Rush, and our civil service director, Scott Morgan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Morgan. I'm the Director of Human Resources for the City of Waterbury. I'm going to point your attention to, there's a handout, it should be on the top of your packages there. It's City of Waterbury Superintendent of Schools' Updated Process and Timelines. Everybody has that, so I want to go through this briefly with you before I turn it over to Dr. Rush for an update on the survey. Speaking of the survey, just an overview, we had meetings, community meetings on Wednesday, January 24th. They started at 9:30 in the morning. We finished, we're here at the Waterbury Arts Magnet Center. We were out of here by about 7:30. We met at 9:30 with SOA and WTA, at 11:30 with the district staff. At 11:30, we met with student council members from each of the high schools. 1:30, we met with the Hispanic Coalition. At 2:30, the School Governance Council. At 3:30, we met with the Concerned Black Clergy. At 4:30, the NAACP. And then 6:30 here, we had the open forum. All totaled throughout the day, we had 123 people attend these meetings. Dr. Rush is going to go over the surveys, but we had over 1,000 surveys were completed, so we appreciate everybody that did that. As far as the timeline is concerned, Stage 1 is completed. We're in Stage 2 now. We're actually in the process of finalizing the job specification and salary. So we're in that 124 to 130, and then 2-5, today we're here, 2-5 for the survey results to the Board of Education. But as you follow along, the plan is, hopefully if we could finalize this as soon as possible, we finalize the vacancy announcement and print the flyers, then actually move into Stage 3 where we start the recruiting and screening all through the month of February into the middle of March. I don't know, we may or may not have appeals, we may or may not need a special civil service commission meeting, I'm not sure. Depends on if anybody's deemed not qualified. And Stage 4 is we go into the candidate presentation, which includes screening the candidates, having an oral panel exam, and conducting the exam. And then finally, the top 5 names go to the Board of Ed for final interview and selection. But as part of our efforts, and I wanted to also go over the recruitment efforts, I'm providing you a list of those, this is on Slide 5, a list of all of the different organizations that we're going to be contacting as far as our recruitment efforts. The AASA, the School Superintendents Association, you notice there's an asterisk there. The reason why there's an asterisk there, there's a national conference on February 15th to the 17th in Nashville, Tennessee, and we wanted to make sure that, to the extent that we could, that we actually use that convention or that conference to advertise our vacancy. And then following along, Slide 6, Selection of the Finalists in Future Planning. Hopefully, the plan is that in the beginning of April, the Board interviews the top 5 candidates. Shortly thereafter develops and offer a contract. So again, I'm going to say it again, it's a little aggressive, but I wanted to make sure that there was, we stayed on task, we didn't lose sight, we didn't forget what we're trying to accomplish here. So that's an update on the timeline. On Pages 7 and 8, I've provided you with information in terms of a salary survey that was conducted. And this information is from the Connecticut Association of Public School Administrators, CAPSS, and what we've identified are the top 10 school districts in the state. And you can see, we've sorted them by the number of students, with New Haven, high at 21, was 22,000, and Meriden at 79,50. What you're looking at is salary, is the actual salary of the person in the position or who was in the position with an average. You can see the average is 231, 722 for the top 10. We also, we took out the, on the bottom, we took out Stanford, Fairfield, and Norwalk, and you can see the average is 215. Currently, our range is 175 to 225. So we're making a salary recommendation of a change from 175 to 225 to 195 and 245. We have a meeting scheduled with the Civil Service Commission tomorrow to review that. And then I would like to get that in front of the Board of Aldermen on their, by the end of the week, I have to submit that to the Board of Aldermen so I can get on the agenda for this month's Board of Aldermen meeting. And the recommendation on this, Ray &amp; Associates is recommending that we increase the salary, and Dr. Rush will talk about that in order to be competitive, not only in Connecticut, but across the country.
I have a question on that. Liz, would you ask a question? Yes, sure. Cap?
I have a concern in, over the last week, I've run into at least one sitting Alderman who has made it clear to me that he has no intention of supporting an increase in the range. Where do we find ourselves if, in the event, the Aldermen don't do that? Are we just, we have to work with what we've got?
We have to publish, it's on the city website, it's called the Management Pay Plan. So, but that figure represents, you're welcome.
One more question. Commissioner Stango?
Thank you. Scott, does the Board of Education have any play in coming into a vote on this, or is that out of our hands?
That's, this is the process that we use for the Civil Service and fill in the jobs.
It's a civil service process, not a Board of Education.
Correct. I believe that you get an opportunity to select and then approve a contract where the actual final salary would be. So we're just setting a range based on a survey that we completed.
So if you were to take this to the Board of Aldermen, and the Board of Aldermen says, what would the Board of Ed say?
I do this for all jobs. I'll give you an example, we did it when we filled the school business position, we did it when we, when we, any of the jobs that we do, we don't, it's, we go through the Civil Service Commission and then the Board of Aldermen. So there's no requirement to go through the Board of Education.
Commissioner Van Stum?
Thank you, Madam President, through you. While there may not be a requirement, when we did this last time, I had said that the last time we went down this road, the Board of Education had the opportunity to send a salary range and job specifications with our approval to the Civil Service Commission. So we're saying we're bypassing that this time?
Dr. Rush is going to talk about the job specification. There'll be an opportunity for you to weigh in on that. But for the salary range, it's a recommendation made by the consultant, approved by the Civil Service Commission, and then the Board of Aldermen.
But at the end of the day, every year, we're going to have to go back into a finance committee to determine if we can afford to pay this person. It would only make sense that we get to weigh in first, whether or not we believe we could afford that range. I understand the arguments you're making, it's the same arguments that were made when we hired Dr. Olet, that we need to up the range so we can have a better field of people. But I have grave concerns that the 10 people who were elected here to oversee the superintendent in the Department of Education don't get to weigh in on the salary range in that we will only have some kind of input on the job specs.
Commissioner Van, okay.
So I just, I just object with the way this is happening. You know, we're already past the dates that these, and we're all supposed to be done, and as is too often the case in this city.
I guess my understanding is that by city charter, that's their responsibility? Is that correct?
Well, it might be their responsibility to sign off, and it doesn't mean we get to be cut out of the process.
I don't know what to say. Tom?
So we're just going to let it happen, so we don't know what to say?
What's your recommendation?
We have the opportunity to discuss the salary range and recommend what we think is right to the Civil Service Commission. We may agree 100% with what they have, but we even had the opportunity to talk about it.
Dr. Rush?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Michael Rush. I'm representing Ray &amp; Associates, the search firm. Perhaps since the question came up, maybe I could explain why we recommended, why the search firm recommended a salary increase?
I don't think that's the issue right now. I think the Board feels strongly that they would like to discuss the salary range and make a recommendation to you, correct? Is that what you're saying?
I would like us to have an input on the next person we're hiring, how much we pay them. You know, going by the way it was done last time, and maybe that's not the perfect way to do it, but all the things that Scott had mentioned happened. It went to Civil Service and it went to the Board of Aldermen, but it started here. We had a conversation about how much we thought we could afford, since it's our budget at the end of the day paying this person, and put that to the Civil Service, and then it went to the Board of Aldermen. I think it got kicked back once, we had to start over again. But we were part of the process, which seems like this time, you know, we get to sign a contract at the end of the day, which, terrific. You know, we really have, you know, how many times have people cave told us we have one job, and that's to hire a superintendent? And we're being cut out of figuring out how much to pay them and what their job specifications should be.
Anne?
Scott, last process, I recall myself and Mr. Odom both meeting with Civil Service Commission in reference to the salary, and it was discussed. And I understand that that's your process, but out of courtesy to this Board, who will take the heat for whatever superintendent's salary we pay in the end, and will take the heat for any salary range change, out of courtesy, I would think, that we would have a discussion here, and we would at least be heard at Civil Service.
It's on the agenda.
Anne Stum?
In the middle of Tom's meeting.
Oh, it's my turn?
Yes.
Thank you.
I thought we'd go in order of who asked to talk. To follow up on that, I'm not so sure I want to compare a salary to three failed districts. I mean, I don't care what they pay the districts, they're failing, as bad as we are. So none of them should make this money. So I do think we should have input into this.
Yes, I understand, but the purpose of this meeting, and maybe at the end of their presentation, we can discuss the salary and how to move forward.
Okay, I have other questions.
Okay, go ahead.
But that is a significant concern of ours, because we're being completely bypassed on a budget we have to approve. So, I mean, we made a big mistake by keeping this as a Civil Service job. If we go back to Slide number 4, where Civil Service will look at the top 12 applicants in an oral panel. Are we at least, as elected officials, allowed to observe those conversations?
No.
And why is that?
It's an oral panel exam, it's confidential, it's between the applicants and the people who will be rating the responses by the applicants.
So once again, we're being completely excluded from the selection process?
It's typical in an examination setting that it's kept confidential and not shared. It'll probably take 2 days of examination, and if I let somebody in the room to observe, there's no way I can guarantee that that information will not be shared with others outside the examination.
So who is this panel?
The panel will be selected by Ray &amp; Associates. Just like we did recently with the supervising vice principal, we had Cooperative Educational Services, we contracted with them to construct written and oral exams for our supervising vice principal, which they did. We gave the written exam, the people that passed the written were invited in for an oral. CES, with our assistance, identified 9 people that were selected to be on 3 separate panels for 2 days, and it was kept completely confidential.
So it sounds like, Madam President, that we're only responsible for paying the person, and outside of that, we have zero input into this decision-making. Thank you.
If you may continue your presentation.
Again, good evening. I'm Dr. Rush with Ray &amp; Associates. What I will do is go over the survey results. Scott went over numbers and who we saw. Also, people had an opportunity to go online and do the survey, I think most of you did it as well, community people also did it. We had over 1,200 people to complete the survey. What I'm going to ask you to do, first of all, the pick sheet, put that in front of you, and also, the superintendent search constituent staff board survey results. By the way, you have quite a few papers there, the other ones for your information, we can go through them, but you can certainly take them with you and read later. But my main purpose is to go over the survey results from the 1,200 people, more than 1,200 people who completed the surveys. On the pick sheet, I will not read this to you, because I think it would be embarrassing to me and to you for me to read something that I know that very well everyone on the Board can read, on the Commission who can read. But if you look at the white sheet that I have for you to survey, and also the pick sheet which explains the survey. So if we turn to page, the first page, where it says, raw score sheet. If you look at the top of the page, you will see every group who participated, every group who participated, the raw score and the rank. You see the teachers, administrators, support staff, parents, students, non-parent community members, and of course, Board of Education members. And for example, if you look at the top, you see those names, and you can see the ranks and the raw score. For example, if we look at, let's say number 1 for an example, raw score of 146. If you look across the line, you see who did what, what group did what. Parents had 59, of the parents said number 1 was important to them, made it a raw score of 194, ranking number 2. Even Board of Education members ranked number 1, 94, I'm sorry, 24, ranked number 1, 24, which is okay. So if you glance at that for a moment. Questions regarding the raw score, the ranking? Yes, sir.
Mr. Rush, I suppose I've got to get on board here in understanding the way this is laid out. Looking at Board of Ed on number 1, you're saying the Board of Education raw score is 1?
Right.
Right? So what's the rank of 24 then? Where does that come?
It was 24th. It means 1 person found it important, correct?
1 person found it important?
The 10 was 1 found it important.
There were 30 elements, so that ranked number 24 out of 30 elements.
Okay. Okay. I thought you were speaking when you first started that the Board of Education wholeheartedly endorsed number 1, was only one of us.
Oh, no, no. No, what they did, again, there were 30 characteristics, and you look at each one of them, and 24, that's number 24, that's the 24th question, I mean, concern.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, so the one I'm taking from that is 1 Board of Education member supported that attribute.
Only, right, only 1 supported it, okay?
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Now, if you look at Page 2, and the same groups across the top, teachers, starting with the teachers, and if you look over to your right, you will see where the recommendations are. And what you have in front of you, by the way, because this is kind of small, if you look at the blue sheet, your blue sheet, the blue sheet will show you where they are. And by the way, I'm going to remind you that this is not ranked alphabetically or priorities. This is where they came out, but it's not a priority as to which one you would like first or second or third. We only do that if you decide that you wanted to try to rank them according to priority, then we would put that on the flyer, which we will be developing very soon. But if you look at recommendations, has leadership skills to respond to opportunities and challenges, that ranked combined ranking of 1, which means the students, the teachers, the Board members, community, parents, they felt that that was important enough to be there. Again, I remind you that in talking to Scott and anybody else, your Board members, I mean, Commissioners, if at any time you wanted to say, "Well, see, I think we should have them ranked," or "I think number 10 should be there," I'm just picking it out of a hat, then you can decide, and we can figure out a way to add it. When you look at your blue sheet again, you will see the ones from 1, I think we ranked 10, and 3 to consider. 1 we thought was important. If you look down at number 20, number, the last one, it's number 9, they're not numbered, but number 9, if you just go 1 up from the bottom, not the consider ones, the other We thought it was important to have someone, we thought it, and your people, your group thought it as well, someone who has worked in similar type districts. The one at the very top possesses an excellent people skills, which is also key. Being a former superintendent myself, I look at people, if they have, if you have top people skills, I can train you in what I need you to do, work with you. But if you don't have people skills, then that leaves us shorthanded in terms of who we would like to lead our district. But again, that's how I feel, but this is what your people say, you guys and the people who did this, they said that as well. Questions regarding the survey. Now, the other thing we can go through, the other package, you have one that has to say additional comments. Whatever comments individuals made from your community, look at one of the sheets, those comments are there. I think it would be important for you to read those comments and get an idea of what people are saying about your district. And these comments are exactly what the people wrote, we did not change them, we just added them to the comment sheet. Also, there's a district review. Under the district review, people also made comments. You see the strongly disagree or strongly agree. This was your community, people who did the survey also did this as well. So it gives you another idea of what people said about number 1, about those 9, 10 items that we talked about. For an example, I gave you a copy, and on the district review, it says, District Schools provide a safe learning environment for all students. And it has strongly disagree or strongly agree. And you can see the percentage of who said what about agreeing or disagreeing.
A lot of this is about the dress code.
Now, it's a lot there, so I do not expect you guys to just read this, but I think it's something you can digest as Commissioners and in charge of the district in terms of setting policy and those kinds of things. I think it's something that you should read later on at your leisure, so you'll know as Commissioners what's being said, what the community's saying about, community, students, parents, and some of themselves are saying about the district.
I'd like to ask a question. Can we assume that some of these questions are going to be part of the questions asked of the new superintendent, how they would address some of these areas?
Yes, when we, yes, we will use part of these questions, and if you have specific questions, before we narrow them down, you know, we can ask the question, because what we do is we survey each candidate. Each candidate, once we narrow it down, we're not going to survey 70 candidates, but once we narrow it down to 15 or 20 before bringing them to the Committee, Selective Service Committee, we will narrow them down, and questions that we think are pertinent to the job in terms of matching, we will ask those questions. And then we also ask them to show us proof that you've either done this, or you are capable of doing whatever has to be done. So we'll do that, yes. Because it's important to us to see what the community is saying about the district themselves. And these will be in Scott's office, if community would like to have copies, they'd certainly welcome to them, because this is what they did. And sometimes communities say, "Well, listen, we fell out the survey, but nobody's told us anything." But it's our job to present them to you guys first, for anybody's easily. But yes, we will ask those questions.
Liz, I'll also put at least the first sheet that Dr. Rush showed you, we'll put it out on our website so people can look at it. I know some of it's a lot to look at, but at least people can see the overview of the results of all the questions on the survey.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. All right, because the community is asking about the results, some may not have had an opportunity to stop in tonight. So what website are we talking about that we're going to have these results? Will it be on our website, the Waterbury Public Schools, so that we can get that information out to the public?
We'll do it both on this, we'll do it in the same locations that we did the surveys. It'll be on the Board of Ed website, in the same place we posted the surveys.
Okay.
So this way, anybody who took a survey should be fairly easy for them to go back to the same location to find the results of the survey.
All right.
Does that work? Does that okay? Is that okay?
That works, yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Through the chair.
Yes, Doctor.
Additional questions on the survey? Because I need to go over a couple of other things once we've done this, I think is pertinent to what we're doing.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I do.
Oh, go ahead.
The question regarding the, I'm looking for the page, regarding the PHD EDD. I want to make sure I'm interpreting that correctly. The number four that's there, what is that? What is that stating? I can't, in fact, I'm sorry, can't get back to it, but. There was something, it said, consider, it said at the bottom, and it said, consider EDD.
Oh, okay.
All right, so what is that? How are we to interpret that?
That is one thing I'd like to address once we finish this, so good question, thank you.
All right, sure.
Right, I'm gonna address that.
Thank you. One other question?
Yes, go ahead.
So. I understand about the raw data, that's very, very good. But if we asked you to put this in rank order, could you do that? For example. You know, the questions, the questions that were asked, put like, for example, that in order and put what the ranking is? Is, can we do that or?
Regarding the 30 characteristics.
That's, okay.
You're talking about the 30 characteristics, aren't we?
Yes.
Okay, see, all of them are good characteristics. The 30 characteristics, that's why we don't rank them. However, if the commissioners feel that you want one of these, number one, two, and say in rank order, you can do that. The reason we don't rank them is because all of them are good characteristics in looking for a superintendent.
Okay.
Which you guys may feel, and if you feel that. You can take, you can, as soon as possible, yes, you can rank them. Or you can rank them now for a few minutes and say, you want this one as number one.
Right, right.
This is number two, if you want, you guys want to do that.
Okay.
Totally up to you.
All right, I got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Van Stone?
Just to follow up, because maybe I'm misunderstanding, because I thought that's what we had on page two of this, under the column called combined ranking.
Oh, you're talking about this?
Yeah. They are.
On the second page.
Yeah, so Karen, if you look at page two of this.
No, I got it, I got it, I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're right. Thank you.
I got it.
But see, sometimes board members may want, this is the ranking based on what your people said. Okay, but sometime board members want to say, since we have the final say, I keep saying board members, that's what we do in New Jersey, but commissioners. You may want to say, you want to change the ranking.
Really?
Because you felt something was better, number one, than somebody else did. Again, this is an overall ranking as to what the people said.
Commissioner Stango?
Dr. Rush, just as a comment as far as the survey is concerned. My concern is that it could be a false, some of these could be false negatives. Because on any given day, I feel one way. And then as you're driving in the car, as you're watching TV, you're thinking about it, and then you feel another differently the next day. You say, oh, I should have included that one and let that one go. It's just.
I agree.
I mean, they're still arbitrary. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
If I, if I like ice cream and you say, okay, pick three flavors, well, I don't want to pick three flavors. I want to pick them all. I want to pick all these as attributes.
We've said that, I agree with what you're saying, because we've said that to people, somebody said, well, all of them are good.
Yeah.
Now, I mean, if we find somebody with all of these characteristics at the same time, then you're the only district in the country who were able to have done that. But what we try to do, we try to match as closely as possible. I do agree with you, somebody can feel one way one day and the next day totally opposite or different.
I mean, certainly out of the 30, I would eliminate two, three, four. But, I mean, when you're limited to only choosing X amount, it's not easy. And I'm sure you've heard it before.
I've heard it, well, we hear this a lot because people say exactly what you're saying, all of them are good. And I may feel differently tomorrow. This is why, if you do 10, and Mr. Van Stone did 10, but then you're not gonna do the same ones. Okay, so we take your 10, his 10, somebody else's 10, and then we collate them. But I agree with you, that's, but that's what surveys do. They're not gonna give you 100% of what we all want.
Okay. I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you, Madam President. Scott, when is the Civil Service meeting on similar decision-making based on these results? Tomorrow, you said?
No, just the salary tomorrow.
Okay. Well, that's an important.
Yeah, no, but is that what you?
Well, that's what I'm asking, yes.
It's tomorrow, just the salary.
What time is that meeting?
It's at 6 o'clock.
Okay. We have an extremely important curriculum meeting we're having tomorrow. Most, if not all, of these commissioners want to attend. So seeing that we have to write that check for that salary, is there any other time that meeting could take place? We have, this will be our fourth attempt at the curriculum meeting that we need to go over our test scores. Both are important meetings, however, like I said, it's our fourth attempt at the meeting we're gonna have tomorrow night. So you basically, by having that meeting tomorrow, probably exclude this entire board.
We, the Civil Service Commission meets designated times, but what I can do is. I could change it to Wednesday?
Well, I'm only asking because it's nice they meet designated times. Although we have decided to meet only twice a month, this particular week, commissioners are out for the five nights. So it's nice that Thursday for us is a night off, however, we're out four nights this week. And tonight and other nights, this is only one of our two meetings this evening. So to be able to attend that, seeing that we write the check, it would be nice. And then Wednesday, we have another meeting, or a committee meeting.
Thursday?
Thursday, I know a number of commissioners are going to a CCM meeting. I would like a little coordination when such an important topic that affects this board and a meeting is designated. That maybe we know that that will be on the agenda. Because, like I said, I mean, you're talking about establishing a salary range that we have to pay. Are we good over there?
Yes.
Thank you. So if we may, I mean, we need to be, have a presence at that meeting.
Okay, so tell me, do you have any availability this week at all?
Friday? I mean, I'm being a little sarcastic, but we have commissioners attached to meetings every night this week.
And if I may, Madam President, I don't think it's improper for us to actually talk about it before we just go to a civil service meeting. You know, it's one thing for us to all go sit in the meeting on a night that works. But I still, I still am of the mindset that 10 of us should take the recommendations, kick them around, agree, disagree, edit, and then give them our opinion. And take that to civil service. I doubt that happens this week, Scott. Unless I'm dead wrong.
I think, I think the issue, the issue for me, and I appreciate the conversation, the issue for me is that the Civil Service Department, this is their job. To do research, to come up with pay scales, to come up with. I mean, I don't feel as if I have, you know, the knowledge base, they've done the research, this is their recommendation. Now, the Board of, I mean, we could say, looking at a budget, we could say, well, we want to keep it the way it is because of the budgetary reasons. His job to me is to give us the best information about the market value and the market rate. And then it's up to the Board of Alderman and people who want to weigh in on that. But our job is not to set.
Madam President, I would disagree because what is happening here is.
I'd like to finish, please, Commissioner. I'd like to finish, Tom, please.
Well, I think I have the floor.
No, you didn't.
I do have the floor, I'm asking questions.
Then Commissioner Van Stone spoke, and then I'm responding to Commissioner Van Stone. So you will get an opportunity.
What they're talking about is a recommendation of the Ray and Associates on what to change.
Exactly.
It is not their expertise at all.
I, that's not my understanding right now, Tom. My understanding is that they've done the research.
I don't even know why I'm talking at all, because it doesn't matter. This board is being made worthless in this search.
I think we should have a civil conversation here and stop the accusations.
I'm talking very civil. I think.
I think there's a, let's, let's.
Fine, I'm done. Thank you.
You know, I think we're, you know, this is, this is the civil service process. We voiced our opinion, I think things might have been done differently in the past, I was not here. But I think, to me, the issue is we are paying professionals to do their job, and they're doing their job. And if you want to weigh in on, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know salary ranges. I know I don't want to pay somebody who's in Greenwich, but I don't have that expertise. And Commissioner Van Stone, you might have the expertise, but if you would like to weigh in at, go right ahead.
I don't, I rarely claim to ever have expertise in pretty much anything. But I think when people elect us to this job, no one pretends we're experts in curriculum. No one expects we're experts in building. No one expects us to be experts in any of that. But they put us here to be their voice. So what we did in the process to hire a superintendent was, we hired a firm for their recommendations and for their expertise, because that's what they do.
Exactly, yeah.
But here's where I think I disagree. They give us their recommendations and we decide if we take them, because we're the boss. We're writing the check and they're providing the service. So they say, this is all of our years of knowledge and expertise, this is what we believe to be right, do with this what you will. Which is all their job is, and I think they've fulfilled it. But I think it's incumbent of us, as the elected representatives, to run this board, that we need to have our hands in every one of these steps. And like I said, once we hash this out, we may come to the exact same number they have. Or we may not. I'm not too sure what the problem is with us having that discussion.
There's no problem, but it's not on the agenda this evening. We could vote to add it to the agenda. I guess I'm, I'm open to that discussion, but I'm landing on it's the civil service job to do that. It's not our job to, yes, it's our job to approve a salary range eventually, but right now, he's giving us information.
Actually, we don't even approve a salary range. Our only chance to talk about this is beforehand. We recommend.
A contract, I meant to say a contract.
Right, but that, even then, that's not really us either. We'll, we'll have interviews of five people, where of those five, we'll pick one. The range will already be established. Another people other than us will negotiate the final contract and where the superintendent lands within that range.
That's, that's the process, yeah.
Right, but I'm saying, this is our one bite at the apple, to have insight and weigh in on what we think that, we're talking specifically now about the salary range, but also the job specs, which are just as important. You know, I don't think we should necessarily do it tonight, although I got time. But my recommendation being, it'll throw Scott's timeline off a little bit, is they pull it off Civil Service this week, so we as a board can sit down. And have a voice in hiring the next superintendent, which, again, I don't think is that big of an ask. I asked it three weeks ago, no one cared then, apparently.
The Civil Service Department, it's their process, it's not our process. This is our opportunity to have input. We have given input. I don't know what else to say unless we want to fight to get the Civil Service changed so that it goes back into the Board of Education.
I'm not looking.
I don't understand.
I don't think I'm looking for a fight, Liz, I'm simply looking for a conversation to say, this is what we as the board believe is our recommended salary range. If they want to present a competing salary range, God bless them. But I don't, I don't think it's out of. I don't think it's out of order to ask that, and I think it's frankly proper. I don't, I don't see why it would be any other way, honestly.
Yeah. Commissioner Sweeney?
I mean, there's, there's one other option here, and it's, quite frankly, it's not pretty. But the other option is, is we have the conversation and we show up at the Board of Alderman meeting when this is coming up for a vote, and we voice our opinion.
Oh, I would do that, don't worry about it.
Again, I'm not sure that you want us to go in there like that. Maybe disputing a range that Civil Service puts forward, rather than having a conversation and coming to an agreement between the Board of Ed and the Civil Service, what you'll present to the Board of Alderman. So that's an option. And if it's the only option we're left with, then I think you're gonna see some commissioners at the Board of Alderman.
I think we could revisit it right now, maybe go back and look at it, and we could have the conversation now. It seems like if you want to reiterate how you got to asking for the increase, go ahead, and then we could talk about it. Kathy?
I just want to offer this, this is where I struggle with us as a group. We are the policy board for the education, we're not tasked with running the Education Department. It's our job to review the laws, make policy, implement decisions, and pass those down to the educators, the administrators, to educate our kids. I hear what you're saying, Jason, about the range. The long and the short of it is, we hired a professional firm to bring back to us a recommendation. I don't know anything about what he, what Dr. Rush did for us. I don't know where I would call to find out what the range should be. That's why we paid them.
That's what I said.
And that's what I think is their job. So they're coming to us with recommendations. I get it's frustrating that we can't even approve the recommendation because it's actually up to a different board, the Civil Service Commission, to say yes or no. And not only that, ultimately, it's gonna land at the Board of Alderman, who have no responsibility to deliver education to our kids. Their biggest complaint, caught myself. Is gonna be the fact that we potentially may be asking for additional dollars, whether or not we think we need to pay them immediately or sometime in the future. That's the difficult position that we find ourselves in to defend whatever the new range may be. Do we want to pay more? No. Do we need to pay more? I believe so. Because the one thing that every adult in this city is responsible for that's in the government section is the responsibility for educating our children appropriately. And we're not doing that right now. So to be honest with you, I don't care how much we have to pay if it's gonna make a difference in the classroom and put a productive student on the street at graduation. Now, that sounds like I'm preaching, I'm just saying, I don't know what level of minutia we want to get into. We hired a professional, they've made recommendations, they're going to Civil Service. To Commissioner Sweeney's point, if we don't like it, let's go to the Board of Alderman and explain it. At that night, I want to ask you a question, Scott. Can they alter the range without Civil Service revoting it? Can the Alderman change the range?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Well, there's another opportunity.
I think they can reject and it goes back.
Right. I think you might be right.
And I would agree with 90% of what you said. Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Well, I think that's the point I was making, so go ahead.
I agree, right up, you said, we hired them to make recommendations to us. They're not making a recommendation to us, they're giving us an edict of a number that's now going to some other third party. So I agree with you to that point.
And it's frustrating, as I said.
Yeah.
So it, and this will be the last time I say it, because I'm a bit beating dead horse. If we hire them to give us a recommendation, we should accept the recommendation, discuss the recommendation, and either agree or disagree with the recommendation. Not simply punt it to another commission. And two, as far as the, I think in spirit, I agree with, you know, if we paid this person a million dollars and it worked, I would agree with you. But in the real world, a $15,000 difference is not gonna change the life of one kid, probably. So I might part ways there with you, but. Frustrating is the right word, because I think more and more frequently in this board, we are either discounted or rubber stamped. And all we've been told in my entire time here is that we have one job, hire a superintendent. And now, that responsibility's been taken. And now that responsibility's been taken away. So why are we out four nights a week?
Any other comments? Yes, Dr. Rush?
Yes, if- if I may, and I can appreciate what the commissioners are saying. I could either agree or disagree, but I appreciate your honesty, number one. If- if I may talk for a few minutes about a couple of things that the question you had about Ms. Harvey-
Yes.
Number four, we'll talk about that. And then I- I want to give you a personal perspective on salaries for superintendents. Different places, but right now, we're talking about Waterbury. But can I- I want to talk about examples of minimally required experience and training to your question, or your concern.
Yes.
Johanna's going to point- going to pass out a sheet of paper to each of you, and there're mainly three statements on that paper. The first, while she's passing them around, has to do with a state requirement in Connecticut. Be in possession or be eligible for a Connecticut State DOE O-93 certificate for superintendent of schools. That we can't get around. That's for every superintendent in the state. Number two, please read with me. Have earned a doctorate in education from an accredited college or university approved by the Connecticut State Department of Education and who have at least three or more years experience as a central office administrator at the level of assistant superintendent of schools, Waterbury equivalent, or above, in a pre-K-12 through 12 school system. And/or, if they don't have that, that earned doctorate, the or is have earned a master's degree or higher in education from an accredited college or university approved by the Connecticut State Department of Education who have five or more years experience as a central office administrator at the assistant superintendent or above level. Number three, five or more years educational experience as a school-based administrator, principal, vice principal, equivalent, in a large urban school district with 10,000 students or more. Let me say why our firm, and I am recommending this. When- when I do searches, I research the district extensively. I researched Waterbury. And in researching Waterbury, I was really concerned. Somebody mentioned test scores. Concerned about your test scores and the movement that have not- that hadn't happened in at least 15 years. Not blaming anybody, but there's a problem in Waterbury. Your survey said it. Your parents, your administrators, your teachers, and even your students said it, even though at the top of their list had to do with Vescov. But they are concerned. So number one, I bring this to you to say because some people said that the person must have a doctorate to be a successful superintendent. While I have my doctorate, that is not true. I have an EDD. There's a difference in an EDD and a PhD. Some of you may prefer a PhD over an EDD. Personally, I'm an educator. I would- if I were dealing with widgets or something, I may say, uh, and PhD is better. But when you're working with real children, the EDD makes a difference because of the work that you have to do to earn the EDD. However, if you're looking for the best person, we're saying that the person may have an EDD or PhD, and the person may not have. I don't want to name a school district because we're on television, but there's a school district I know that was in big trouble a while ago. The person who's leading that district as a superintendent does not have a PhD. Been there five years, and the person is doing a fantastic job without the scandal that went on in that district before. So I'm suggesting strongly to the board, because this is your search, of showing it to the commissioners, to allow us, our firm, to put this in under requirements. What you see now could go in under requirements. We have not completed the flyer. We would like to complete the flyer ASAP. Again, so the team who's going to Tennessee will have the flyer with your information on it. On one side of the flyer will be district information. On the other side of the flyer, those qualities that you mentioned and characteristics that you mentioned will be there. The requirements for the job will be there. Some people call it a job description. But that is what my job is as a search firm director handling this search. Now, to go along with that, finding the best person, we talk about salary. And I heard somebody, Mr. Van Stone, you mentioned that you looked at some districts around here, and they're failing. Yes, districts are failing. However, the superintendent's salary should be in the range of similar or like districts. You have some districts on that sheet that were much above what you could probably pay. You have some districts with less students than you have that are making enormous amount of money. However, as Ms. Edwards mentioned, your students, this is the most important job that you guys will have, getting the right people to move the needle in Waterbury. Again, students haven't moved in 15 years. And I'm an outsider. I'm concerned about a lot of our district, but right now, I'm in Waterbury. So in order to move the needle, you want somebody who's good, somebody who's already working, who have their job. We don't look for people who don't have jobs. If they don't have a job, they have to have a good reason why they're not working. And we're looking for people with proven track records. So again, it goes along with whether persons should have a BHD, EDD, or masters plus 30, but you're looking for the best person. And that's what we are doing. Our job for you is to look for the best person because it will help us with the next job in Connecticut or wherever it may be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Commissioner what?
I just have a question. So this document that you've passed out here that has numeral one, two, which has an or component to it, and three, you'd like us to approve this to be put into the job description as it's going to be posted? Or is this part of an advertisement?
It's part of the advertisement.
So it's not in the job with the qualifications to the job? So it actually would be a part of the qualifications?
No, no, these would be the new qualifications.
Okay.
If you remember the old ones-
Yes.
There was a doctorate preferred, but once there are 10 or more qualified applicants with a doctorate, nobody else is considered who doesn't have a doctorate.
Okay. And this would alter that?
Correct.
Okay.
I just have one comment. If I'm reading this, approve- a university approved by the Connecticut State Department of Education, does that mean that if I graduate from a regionally accredited college, a New York University, I would not be able to come in?
No, that's- that's nationwide because you have some schools who are out there, and they're not accredited with middle states or anything. So anything that Connecticut or New York or New Jersey would have approved, it could be from any accredited college or university in the country.
Okay.
And there are some good ones online and blended programs out there.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to limit out-of-state candidates.
No, right, it's not limited. That's- that's- and this being a national search, you're going to be able to find-
Right.
People nationally who, for whatever reason, "Hey, I want to challenge. I want to go to Waterbury and make a difference."
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey, then Commissioner.
All right, so- There- there's been a- I've had a lot of conversations with, uh, about this topic, particularly in the community. And what- what I'm hearing is when we- if we open it up to include those that have master's degrees, a lot feel- a lot of the community feels that that would open it up to more minority applicants, and I'm for that. But what I'm concerned about with the PhD and the EDD is that the person has a proven track record, all right? Just because they have a PhD or an EDD does not mean that that is what is good for our kids. What is their- what is it in the background? What- what types of courses did they take, um, to get their- their PhD or EDD? It's my understanding that the EDD is more research, more- more the type to go towards the superintendent position. Is that correct, Mr.? Okay.
Karen, can I say one thing?
Yes.
For- for civil service process-
Right.
This would be the minimum.
The minimum.
This is just the minimum.
Got it.
But then, after the people meet the minimum, then they have entree into the process-
Okay.
-to be screened by the vendor.
All right.
So this is just to get into the process.
This is, okay, so-
So I just wanted to make that clear so everybody understood.
All right.
And then the screening would take place based on a lot of the information that was provided in the survey. All those things that you say are important in the next superintendent.
All right, so- so what I'm getting at here is, we have someone that applies. They have either a PhD, EDD, or masters, okay? When can we say, is it- at what point do we say that we want this candidate to know about- to have background in an urban district?
Okay. One of- one of the things that we learned from the survey-
Okay.
Is several of the people said that they're looking for somebody who had success in an urban district. When we vet candidates, as I mentioned earlier, when we look at candidates, we look at their background and see have they made a dis- uh, uh, made a positive difference in the lives of kids in their district. Okay? So that's what we do. Uh, there's a district, I can't- can't name districts because of where we are-
Yeah.
But, uh, one particular district that we brought somebody in last year, they were in a district for five years. Uh, this is a district of more than 50,000 students. They had a very, very good success rate. The person that's done his five years there, and I wanted to move, so he applied for another district totally a thousand, 2,000 miles away from where he was.
Right.
And this district was 50,000 or 48,000 students. He made a difference in the district he was before. Now he's been in this district where he is now for like seven months, eight months. And what- what I do, when we place somebody, we check on them periodically. How are things going? What are you doing to make a difference? We also contact the chair of the commi- of the commissioners just to say, "How are things going?"
Okay.
Because it has a lot to do with our two-year guarantee, by the way. Okay?
All right.
So- so- so what I'm saying is, we make sure that the person, the people that we bring to Scott, the 12 people that we'll bring to Scott, we'll make sure those people have the qualities and the certification and qualifications needed for a good match for your district, which has a lot to do with the kind of success they've had in the prior district.
So I want to make it perfectly clear that this time around, all right, that we dive into at some point, and I know with civil service, you know, I'm not sure at what point that occurs, um, but that we know that, you know, the type of courses that this candidate has taken, what they done in their past life and all that. Because just to have a PhD is not this-
Right.
It doesn't do it. It- it hasn't, all right? So I- and I don't know, Scott, at what point that is. Is it- what- what part of the screening process, when does that occur?
Okay, just, uh, let me- before I respond to that question, if you notice number three, it says five or more years educational experience in a school-based administrator-
Right.
-urban district with more than 10,000 students. If you look back at the salary information that I gave you, and you look at the names of the districts-
Right.
You almost can't help but be from an urban district-
Okay.
-if you're over 10,000 people.
Okay. But we- but we're still going to check that.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
No, this will be checked. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
The Ray and Associates checks that. So that's- that's why we added that in there, to make sure that- because that was one of the things that was identified that was a- a major, um, uh, consideration.
Right.
So we wanted to make sure we systemically addressed it by putting a minimum requirement. You know, because you could come from a district of 2,500 students. And then somebody coming from a district of 25 to 4,000 students into a place like Waterbury, I- I- I think, in my experience, that's a pretty big jump. That's like, you know, going from a supervisor to a- to a direct- uh, uh, you know, a director job.
Makes sense.
In my mind, it's like going from a supervisor to a director. It's a big- it's a big jump. Um, so we did that to build it in systemically so that we would pretty much guarantee-
Right.
-that somebody would be from a- a large urban district. And then those other qualities that you're looking for, Ray and Associates assesses those as they come up with the top 12 candidates. And then we do it again when we do the oral panel test. Because the oral panel exam, the questions that we pose are going to come from those- those, um, elements on the survey that you said were most important.
Right. Okay. All right, lastly. Mr. -did you?
Yes, I was just going to explain, uh, for a second, the O-93 because you asked your question, your concern about a masters.
Right.
A person in the- in the state of Connecticut, you must have masters plus 45 additional credits.
Okay.
Okay? And normally, get a PhD or an EDD is 60 credits. So the person is only 15 credits away from having that. So you're talking about a person who with experience in the areas that you want. You want curriculum instruction kind of things. So that's- that's- that's what, uh, the state of Connecticut says, that you must have. The superintendents have it. Some of those people have doctors, some of them don't.
Okay. All right, and just lastly, when we- the- okay, so when we get the candidates for screening, et cetera, um, do we do? I don't want to call it a background check, but I- for lack of a better word, are we- are we checking their previous work location to see, you know, how- how things were, how they did in those, um, in those districts? Are we- do we do that?
Yes, I mentioned that before. Yes, we- we- uh, you can call it a background check, but we thoroughly check the success rate in the last district.
All right, good.
How long they were there, you know? They moved the needle. Kids' test scores improved tremendously.
Right.
Yes, we do that. We make sure that there's nothing in their background that would embarrass you guys or embarrass us.
All right.
So, yes, so we- we do that extremely well, yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We do have another finance committee meeting, and-
Do we need to move this tonight? Do we need to vote on this to add those three, one through three? There needs to be a motion and a vote tonight?
We can't vote.
It's a workshop. So when would we anticipate moving that question forward? If we can't act on it tonight?
You can't act on it tonight?
No.
Uh, they're telling me it's a workshop. We can't vote on it.
It's a workshop. I mean, we could- we could obviously vote to have a special meeting right now.
Or can- can- tonight is considered a committee of the whole, then, correct?
Right.
Yes.
So can we make a recommendation tonight as a committee of the whole that at the next meeting, we move that forward, and that gets it on the agenda?
Yes. Yeah.
Why did I think this was a meeting, not a workshop?
Because you're in WAMs.
Because what?
Well, I think there's, you know, it- you're- if you're saying that-
Well, I think there's, you know, if you're saying that, which I was not aware of, that this, you needed a vote by the board or consensus or our input as to a direction concerning this. We could do it by consensus, which is something we could do.
You can't do that.
No.
You can't, not something of this magnitude.
Okay, so I think we're going to have to have a special meeting where we can vote on this and maybe some other issues. We can't move it forward tonight. Commissioner Sweeney?
This is basically our job description that we're changing here, which we had voted for, in particular, to the addition of the language that you referenced in regards to the doctorate and a total of 10 and all that. That was some language that we put in about six years ago. So this board votes on those job specs. So it really should be the job specs that get changed, and then that advertisement will be based on those job specifications. So that's really what we should be bringing forward here.
Right. We could do it on, Tom?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just a little curious why we would consider a vote on this, but not the salary range.
I think the answer to that is that's part of the civil service in the Board of Alderman. And I think we get to, as Commissioner Sweeney said, this would be part of the job description, which is our job to vote on. So we would have to have a, yes, the Alderman does not vote on the job description of the superintendent. We do. So we would have to have another meeting so we could vote on this job description. Because this is amending the current job description.
So how do we set a salary range if we don't have a job description approved? Even though we're not setting the salary range? I think that's a legitimate question, right?
Yeah, it is.
How is the salary range based if we don't have a approved upon or we're considering changing a job description? I'm just not sure how we do that.
I don't know.
And the meeting's tomorrow to set this salary range.
I think it's two different things, but...
I'm not sure how that's two different things if the...
It's the way the system is set up right now, I think.
I'm not arguing with you.
Yeah, no, I know.
Madam President, I'm just saying, if, I'm not sure how you set a salary range if you don't have a job description. Thank you.
Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam President. I thought we had at least had some movement earlier on about maybe moving that tomorrow meeting. So I think we, before we leave tonight, we have to figure out what we're asking Scott to do, to pull it, reschedule it. But just leaving it limbo, I don't think is the right answer. But to the recommendations, I don't really see a problem with them. I know we can't do anything. Other than, I think it's still got to be a doctorate. I agree that it's not the end-all, be-all. And really smart people can lead really big organizations, not have a doctorate. But I think, I think in, at least in my opinion, in order to show the commitment you would have to our district's children and their education, you first had to have a certain level of commitment to your own education. And I think by going the full marathon and getting your doctorate, I think shows to a degree that you at least had that self-commitment. So that would be part one. Part two, and this is maybe only my concern, it limits the ability to play political games with the next applicant. You know, if we had set a bar of a doctorate, that immediately limits a pool and, you know, somebody's third cousin doesn't all of a sudden become the next superintendent. Not that that would ever happen in Waterbury. And I would have, in a vacuum, I would have trouble getting rid of the doctorate. But especially now, if we're going to say we're going to lessen the qualifications while giving it a raise, makes it even more problematic for me. I don't see how this board can, with a straight face, tell the people that, sure, we're going to give them a nice big raise and lower the qualifications for the job. So those would be, other than, I think you have to strike the or language, the rest of it, I think works for me.
I think we can have a meeting on, as soon as we could do something. We have a policy committee on the 7th. We could have a special meeting to vote on the job description. And then move that forward. That's one option. It's going to snow.
Yeah, it's going to snow.
You know, it took eight months to find a search firm. And now suddenly, we've got to do this all in four weeks. Why? Is there, do you have a time end to your contract with us? Or is it the search process?
No, no, the time doesn't end until the contract is signed. Excuse me. Our job is finished once the contract is signed. Until that time, we're here.
So time out. We have commissioners that want to go to the civil service meeting. We have questions about the job description. Why are we doing this in five minutes, in a week, jammed with meetings? That next week, we've got to find a time. Time out, folks. Let's set a schedule, make sure we can all attend. Let's go to the civil service meeting. Let's go to the Board of Alderman. Let's have a unique conversation. To your point, this is the most important thing we'll do. Why are we rushing it?
We did this process in like two and a half months last time. Now, we're doing it in two evenings.
Scott, I think the will of the board is to slow down and maybe be more engaged with the civil service and work on the job description, and then look at the salary range. I think that's what we're saying. So if you would please move forward in that way, if possible. I think that would make everybody here feel comfortable. And also, I think the public would like to make sure that this is not feeling like it's rushed, if that's possible. A question or a comment?
A question.
Okay.
Who was headed to Nashville? Who was going to go to Nashville? I know some of this was talked about, we need to do this because there's this thing in Nashville.
Representatives from our firm.
From your firm, not from this district?
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure there was no one from this district going down to recruit for our next superintendent. Because that would be a little disingenuous.
Right, right. What we do is we make sure that the conferences, we go to this one, go to school boards, you know, state conferences, just to let people know we're there to answer whatever question. But yes.
Well, I would tell them that there's something coming on the horizon that they're going to want to stay tuned for. It's not fully cooked yet, but it's coming.
All right, with this robust discussion, I may have a motion to adjourn.
Just one question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Scott, could you, with the guidance from the President, now could you let, kind of let us know what your takeaway is?
Well, what I'll do is I'll reschedule civil service commission meeting.
We appreciate that.
Okay? And then, but what I would ask is that you tell me when, at your earliest convenience, you can meet.
I think that's fair.
Okay. Thank you. We'll get back to you tomorrow. Okay? All right, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right.